So I want to welcome all of you to our council meeting, and those that are watching from afar. It's good to have you with us. We'll call the meeting in order. And with us this morning is Pastor David Griffiths. He's the Hunger Relief Director of Heaven Sent Ministries. It's going to provide an invocation. And following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and invite all of you to join us for both of those. Pastor, great to have you.
Thank you. If I heard correct, yeah, Stan, please. Heard correctly, if I state my name and address, I get five minutes to pray? What a chance. All right. Lord, we just come before you. It's an incredible season for the religious community, Lord. The night that you were going to be betrayed, you did service. And this council that's up here behind me, and many of those out here in the audience, said that they do community service. And you set that example for us. And so, Lord, I just want to thank you for that. And I want to pray over all in the room, but especially those in leadership, including probably half, three-quarters of this room, that we would make sound and fair judgments. We would make decisions that went in favor of us. That's called nepotism, you know, our friends and family. And then, Lord, as a minister, I want to proclaim your blessing, not my blessing, your blessing. I get to do this out of number six, 24 through 26, and it says, "May the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord make his face to shine on you and be gracious to you. May the Lord turn his face towards you and give you peace." So, Lord, we just ask for that today, for each person who's in here, in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate you. We have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April 2nd, 2019. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, I move that we approve the meeting minutes. Second? Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. I have a couple of proclamations this morning. So our first proclamation is for Financial Literacy Month. So if we can have, I know former council member Levonta Williams is with us for this, and some others. You want to, Dreamcatcher Wealth Management, Minerva Foundation, and NAACP, come on. Levonta's not going to speak, is she?
She's taking five minutes.
Five? When have you ever just taken five minutes? So the proclamation from the city of Wichita. Whereas since 2003, the President of the United States has declared April as Financial Literacy Month to raise public awareness about the importance of financial education. And whereas many Wichita citizens struggle to manage their money due to lack of financial literacy, and whereas by working together through financial education programs for all ages and all income levels, we can eliminate or greatly reduce poverty and prepare our future generations for better financial decisions and results. And whereas Wichita visions a time when all citizens of our city and state have the financial literacy knowledge and skill to ensure economic success, now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeff Longwell, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Financial Literacy Month and call upon all citizens to observe this month with programs and activities to improve their understanding of financial principles and practices in order to reinforce future financial security for life. And Larry, are you going to share?
Thank you, Mayor Longwell, council. I just came across the definition of financial literacy in Investopedia. So I thought I would just read that to kind of get us thinking about money. What is financial literacy? Financial literacy is the education and understanding of various financial areas, including topics related to managing personal finance, money, and investing. The topic focuses on the ability to manage personal finance. Don't we all have issues with that sometimes? And this says to do it in an efficient manner, and it includes the knowledge of making appropriate decisions about personal finance, such as investing, insurance, real estate, paying for college, budgeting, retirement, and tax planning. So we all should think a lot more about financial literacy. And then, the other issue that I've found over thirty-some-odd years in the financial services industries is the psychology that goes along with making decisions about our money. Our mind gets in the way many times of making decisions, but you need the base, and that's what this month is all about. Getting as much information out there to help those that may need either a review. Don't we all sometimes kind of need a review? We know what to do, but we don't do it, right? We have a budget, but we don't stick to it. I mean, who's done that? All of us. And so this month has been dedicated here in Wichita for financial literacy, and there's a lot of great programs that are out there for all ages, from schools to senior centers to just local events in the community. So look around the city here in this month of April. Try to attend one of the meetings on financial literacy. You might just learn something. And the older we get, the less time we have to recover from mistakes, right? So right now, I'd like to introduce Mr. Birch, who's the president of the Wichita NAACP, and they've got a great event that I'd like to tell you a little bit about.
Thank you very much. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Longwell and the city council here in Wichita for providing this proclamation and recognition of Financial Literacy Month that the NAACP is in fact going to recognize. This is a very significant event for our communities across the board, because as was said previously, financial literacy is very important, and regardless of who you are, what station in life you're at, it's something that's very important, and we need to make sure we plan accordingly, because it makes a lot of difference in how we live and the quality of life that we have. Our event is going to be a very detailed one. It's going to be outlined very succinctly in the Community Voice newspaper. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Sandra Rankin, who has been our primary coordinator in this event. So I'm going to ask her to please come and talk a little bit about what she has planned and how this event is going to roll out in the community. Sandra, please.
I guess I'm speaking because I'm the shortest one up here. Anyway, the NAACP, we started this six years ago, our Financial Freedom Empowerment Expo. And this year, it's called Our Pathway to Prosperity. As we're finding out, as Stan Webb said, and Larry said, financial literacy is very important. And if you're noticing now, our credit scores determine so much of how we are taxed when we buy, I mean, not taxes, but our interest rates when we buy houses, just different things. So as Larry said, we're going to have this event. First, we're starting out with a keynote speaker. His name is Versi Lark. He's a multimillionaire, and he's going to share some of his experiences with us. Everything for this event is free. We will have two sets of workshops. We will have lunch provided. We will have free credit scores available if you want to get your free credit score. And then at the end, if you've attended the workshops, you will be able to put your name in the drawing, and if your name is drawn, then you will be able to come to the spinning wheel or either get in the money machine and win money. So we're inviting everyone. This is a public event. It's free. It's at the Urban Preparatory Academy on East 24th Street. So please come, or tell your children, and as Larry said, and I think Stan said, most of these workshops are for all ages. We have from zero, we said from zero to ninety-nine. We'll have work rooms for the children to work and do financial things, clear up to the older ones like me, for social security. So please feel welcome to come, or tell your friends about, you'll see different public announcements about our event. Financial Freedom Empowerment Expo, Pathway to Prosperity. And thank you, Mayor Longwell. (Applause). What's the date? I forgot to say the date. My goodness. It's next, it's April the 27th. From eleven, it starts at 11:30, 11:30 to 3:30. Please forgive me, but thanks for the person that said that that was the most important thing. April, Saturday, April the 27th. Thank you very much again.
Does the council need a break? Thank you all. So we have proclamation for the United States Bowling Congress Women's Championship Tournament that's going to be here, so as Brian, there you are. It looks like you brought all of your friends today. All right. So we have, are you all speaking? Proclamation from the city of Wichita. Whereas United States Bowling Congress joined the history of the American Bowling Congress, Women's International Bowling Congress, Young American Bowling Alliance, and USA Bowling Together to create the overall governing body for the sport of bowling. And whereas USBC Women's Championships is the world's largest participatory sporting event for women, and will celebrate its 100th edition in 2019. And whereas United States Bowling Congress selected Wichita, Kansas for the tournament's 100th celebration, due to our city's amazing and respected bowling heritage, reputation as a sports city, and unmatched hospitality. And whereas the USBC Women's Championships should be held at Wichita's North Rock Lanes from April 20th through June 30th of 2019, bringing more than 16,000 bowlers from across the country and boosting the local economy. And whereas the city of Wichita supports and joins in this national effort to recognize the dedication of our nation's public servants and acknowledge their contributions, I'm not sure how that fits into bowling, but we appreciate the public servants. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeff Longwell, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, will hereby proclaim April 20th through June 30th as the 100th edition of the USBC Women's Championships in Wichita, and encourage the people of Wichita to join us in welcoming thousands of the nation's best bowlers to Wichita, Kansas, as they celebrate 100 years of rich bowling heritage in a place known for the love and hospitality of bowling. So who would like to share?
Thank you, Mayor. Good to have you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Longwell and city council. I am Brian Hargrove, Executive Director of Sports Development at Visit Wichita. I'd like to welcome, joined by Kathy Prang with USBC, Cynthia Wentworth, Susan Coors, and Josh Howell with Visit Wichita. Also have James O'Connor with USBC in the crowd as well. This is an event that's been five years in the making, and now it's here. As the mayor said, on April 20th through June 30th, we will be hosting over 16,000 female bowlers in our community. That will bring an estimated economic impact of over $7 million to the city of Wichita. At Visit Wichita, we are always looking for these transformational sporting events to bring to the city. This is an event that definitely hits that transformational aspect of things. So on behalf of USBC and Visit Wichita, we are honored to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Brian. (Applause).
And very quickly, I'm Kathy Prang with the United States Bowling Congress, and on behalf of the Women's Championships, just want to say thank you to the city of Wichita for having us here. I know our 16,000 ladies are looking very forward to coming here to Wichita and experiencing everything that this city has to offer. So thank you very much, and we are looking forward to our time here with you. Thank you.
Record time. Madam Clerk, you want to call the next item, please?
Alan Trinari, Personal Involvement in the Community is a Two-Way Responsibility.
My name is Alan Trinari. I live at 1461 North Byrne Street. I'm the Officer-at-Large for the North Riverside Neighborhood Association, and I've, my family has been in Wichita my entire life. My aunt, my uncle, my mom, all went to North High right over by where I live. I take being involved in the community very, very seriously. My companion of over the last ten years passed away from an antibiotic-resistant bacteria that she picked up in a hospital in Colorado. It was an enormously painful and long experience. Last month of her life, I spent six to eight hours a day speaking to her on the telephone, providing her with moral support to deal with the pneumonia that she carried. She had lung cancer from smoking too many cigarettes. She had the cancer under control by utilizing medical marijuana. I'm a huge medical marijuana advocate. I bled out in Colorado over it. I've been rendered destitute by what I consider to be selective persecution, the people that are involved in industrial hemp, medical marijuana, and I'm not real wild about the recreational. It's done a lot of damage to the people that are trying to use it as medicine back in Colorado, and it's created a whole bunch of, but it has to be. It's time, it's persecution, period. It's the same thing as the Jim Crow laws. You just ask somebody else to blame. It's time that we have, the blame that goes along with so many things to go away. It affects our ability to treat each other nicely, for one thing. I want to express my dismay about what happened with Mead's corner. I came back from Colorado and came into a city council meeting when that decision was made, and I just happened to sit down behind the three gentlemen that were involved in that. And the way that they were reacting when that was all going down, I felt very rushed, that it was very, that the decision was made before, and it was, it's really a very fine building, and I hate to see it being knocked down. The same goes for Century Twelfth, Century Two. I look at it as being willful neglect, as leading to saying that Century Two has to be knocked down. It's on everything. This is a symbol of Wichita. We need to figure out some way to be able to preserve it and improve upon it, to make us look better. Why can't we have nice things? Got to knock them all down, make something else, you know? I'm trying to, you know, this has been a very difficult time for me. My stepfather passed away, then my uncle passed away, then my father passed away, now my companion recently passed away, and it's all coming from this overexposure to chemicals. And I'm glad to see that there's somebody coming up on the agenda today that is going to speak to that. I consider Roundup to be a very, but it's injured me. I have bubbles from what it does to your guts, and it's uncomfortable. I appreciate the ability to be able to stand before you and speak to you, to be involved. And I would really appreciate, you know, the evening city council meeting that we recently had discussing the baseball field, that was a pressure cooker. That was intense. It was long. I had a headache when it was over. I enjoyed participating, and it had to be, the decision that was made had to be made. But it also kind of felt like it was forced, that there was no choice, it had to happen. Of course it has to happen. We have to move forward. But I feel we're doing better, and I want to thank you all for your service. I miss being able to have my district advisory board meeting on April Fool's Day. It would have been fun, but I don't know the whole story behind it. I want to thank you all for your time, and, you know, need to remember, one of my main rules in life is that life is a blessing and a curse. You hang on to the curses, they're sticky and they're heavy. Blessings are light, and they'll fly away. So you have to remember to look at what's nice and be nice. And thank you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for this city and this community. I see my time is up.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Angela Perez from Interfaith Ministries, Homeless for a Day Challenge.
My name is Latasha Saint-Arnaud, and I am the president of Interfaith Ministries, representing that organization, and we're at 829 North Market. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did we just get the wrong person signed up, I take it?
Yeah, Angela works for us, so I apologize for the mistake. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city council members, for the opportunity to speak today. As many of you may know, Interfaith Ministries serves those living in extreme poverty, including the homeless. IFM was founded nearly 135 years ago, and since then has helped hundreds and thousands of individuals and families in our community. A big part of this work is Interfaith Ministries' three homeless shelters, where we serve roughly 1,500 men, women, and children each year. At our two emergency shelters, one for each men and women, we help clients meet their basic needs beyond just shelter, including food, clothing, basic care, and case management. These are no-barrier shelters, means we'll take anyone that comes to our door. And each night between those facilities, we serve roughly 140 men and women. Our third shelter serves men, women, and children, and the average length of stay is about 45 days, in that time where we're closely with other agencies and collaborate whenever possible to make sure clients are accessing all necessary services in our community. We also help all of our clients transition into permanent housing. And on that note, I should mention that we manage 105 low-income apartments, 43 of which are designated specifically for the chronically homeless. Each year, we provide affordable permanent housing to nearly 200 individuals and families in our community. We also run Wichita's largest holiday assistant program, Operation Holiday, you might have heard of it, through where we provide basic necessities such as food, blankets, winter wear, pet food, and more. We are proud to say that we have served 14,000 income, low-income residents in Sedgwick County just this last winter alone. Finally, we have a street outreach team who meets clients where they're at. The model really starts with street outreach, going out, finding encampments and other open sleeping places where homeless individuals frequent. We move them into our emergency shelters, and then to our year-round shelter with continuous case management along the way. If we cannot get our clients into our affordable apartments, we find them affordable housing, we work with voucher programs and others in the city. All of our clients receive food, shelter, life classes, including budgeting, cooking, stress management, just to name a few, and as I mentioned, wraparound case management. In total, IFM is serving nearly 16,000 Wichitaans, some of which are the most vulnerable residents in our city, and we believe this work to be critical, as I know all of you do as well. Because this work is so important, we wanted to share a new event with you. This is the first year IFM will be hosting a homeless challenge. As you know, there's a lot, often a lack of empathy for the homeless, and the purpose of this event is to combat that and dispel many of the common misconceptions about this population while raising compassion and much-needed funds for the homeless in our city. The event is Saturday, April 27th, on the IFM campus. Interfaith Ministries has facilities starting at Market and Murdoch, and they run all the way down to Ninth Street in the downtown area. Participants will tour campus, learn more about IFM's supportive services, hear rural stories from homeless individuals that have found success, and then they will actually spend the night at one of our shelters. I think it's important to note that this shelter is closed for the season, so we will not be displacing any clients. On any given night, there are nearly 600 homeless Wichitaans, and that does not count those that are sleeping with friends or families on their couch, or those that are living in their cars. While some suffer from mental illness and chronic poverty, we all know that many of them are just like you and me. This event is not about pretending to be homeless, it's really about raising awareness for the serious challenges homelessness and homeless individuals face in our community and turning those advocates, or participants, into advocates. We really appreciate your time today, and we hope that each of you will come out. I know a lot of you have taken an interest in this, and so we appreciate your attention to the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thanks. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Brandon Clark, Cell and Use of Roundup Herbicide and Other Herbicides That Contain
Is Brandon Clark here? Doesn't appear to be with us this morning, so Madam Clerk, call the next agenda item.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 20.
Is there any item that may be pulled for discussion or clarification? Seeing none, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 20.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Hearing and Approval of KICFA Educational Facilities Refunding Revenue Bonds, Newman University.
Good morning, Mayor and city council members. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the city's Office of Economic Development. For the record, the item before you today is a public hearing for the issuance of educational facilities refunding bonds. The Kansas Independent College Finance Authority, or KICFA, was created in 2001 through a series of interlocal agreements between cities and independent colleges within their jurisdiction. The authority was created to issue bonds for these educational facilities. The governmental entity within which the university resides has the jurisdiction and is required to hold a public hearing for the issuance of bonds. Newman University is requesting a bond issue in the amount not to exceed four and a half million dollars to refund 2015 KICFA bonds for an interest rate savings. There is no cost to the city of Wichita for the issuance of these bonds. The Kansas Independent College Finance Authority will actually issue the bonds. Newman University will pay for the cost of the issuance. Triplet Wolf &amp; Garrettson Law Firm has been selected by Newman University as bond counsel, and there is no property tax request because the university is a 501(c)(3) and therefore is eligible- and therefore is eligible for a property tax abatement in its own right. Therefore, it's the staff's recommendation that the city council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the Kansas Independent College Finance Authority bonds, and authorize the necessary signatures. Dr. Noreen Karoche, who is the president of the university, is here, as is Jennifer Gantz, the vice president of finance and administration, and JT Klaus, who is with the bond counsel, Triplet Wolf and Garrettson, is here, who can answer any questions related to the transaction. And I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions for Tim? We'll go out to the public. Anyone in the audience like to address the counsel on this agenda item?
Is there any liability to the city of Wichita?
Hold on. You're going to have to come up to the podium if you wish to address the counsel.
I'm Noreen Karoche, president of Newman University. On behalf of our three hundred employees who live, work, and shop in Wichita, our current thirty-two hundred undergraduate, graduate, and advanced standing students, nearly six thousand alums who live in Sedgwick County, nine thousand in Kansas, I want to thank you and ask you for your show of support for our financing. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen. Anyone else like to address the counsel?
For the city of Wichita, is there any liability? In other words, what's the downside?
So there is no downside, no liability, and no cost to the city. By statute, we have to approve the bonds, but can you share your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jackie Prickett, and I reside at seventy-three thirty-three East Twenty-Second Street, North.
Okay, thank you. So, Tim, anything you need to clarify in that?
I can answer the question. There is no liability to the city of Wichita. You are correct, Mayor. We are not even issuing these bonds. We will have no obligation, no ongoing compliance. We will have no responsibility for these. We are simply, as the jurisdiction within which Newman resides, we are the entity to hold the public hearing for them for the issuance of bonds. But the city is not issuing the bonds and will have no responsibility for them going forward.
And no liability?
No liability.
Thank you, Tim. Any other speakers? Anyone else wish to address the counsel on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Again, this is in Councilmember Bluebaugh's district, Vice Mayor Bluebaugh's district. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. I shortchanged you there.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Noreen, and thank you to everybody out there at Kansas Newman. You guys do a lot for our community. As you said, we have over six thousand alumni out there and appreciate having the educational opportunities and very excited to have two universities in my district. So at this time, I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the KICFA bonds and authorizing necessary signatures.
Second that. And then do we also require everyone to go tour Kansas Newman? We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thanks for investing in our community. Madam Clerk, next item.
Owners representative for the Northwest Water Treatment Facility project.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alan King, director of Public Works and Utilities. I'm here today to talk about a contract that we would like the council to consider for the services of owner-site representative in regards to the new water treatment plant that we contemplate building. It has always been the position of staff to recommend an approach of a progressive design build that included the services of an owner service rep, particularly on a project of this size and complexity. We're talking about something potentially in excess of half a billion dollars and using new technology. And it's a critical part of the infrastructure. So we did go out for a request for proposals for this project. We only received one proposal, and we had already selected a group that would be evaluating different proposals. So what we did was we put that proposal out to that group and asked for any comments. The comments that we received were positive for the proposal. There were some questions about references. We did do a more extensive examination of the references, actually contacted them. So we're bringing forward to counsel for your review or for your approval this particular consultant, which is Garver. And we've got representatives of Garver here in the audience today in case you have any questions for them. As far as the qualifications, when you look at the person who would be primarily our point of contact, our person that would be providing these owner service, owner representative, it's Mr. Stephen Jones, and he has a bachelor's degree in geology, hydrology, civil engineering. He's very qualified. He has also been an owner's rep in one of the biggest projects in the country, Phase One of the Houston, Texas Northeast Water Treatment Plant. He's also been a player in getting WIFIA funding for projects. And so looking at him and his qualifications, he's definitely the kind of person that we're looking for to help us. When you look at Garver, the company that he's embedded in, they also have an extensive record of big projects like what we're talking about here, including a five hundred and fifty million dollar wastewater capital improvement program in Shreveport, Louisiana, and then also some other large projects. So the company and the individual are definitely qualified. So counsel, going back to the earlier comments, back in December of two thousand and eighteen, we went ahead and got direction to issue the RFP on the design builder. And we received the current design builder, which is Wichita Water Partners. And then we also, at that time, asked for budget. They're Phase One of the project, which is to get us to the preliminary design of at least thirty percent, a guaranteed maximum price and a contract and an application to both WIFIA and the state revolving fund. That was approved by counsel with a budget of seven million dollars. Their fee was just about six million dollars. But we purposely asked for another million dollars anticipating that we were going to be listing the help of an owner service rep. So we received the proposals, and like I said earlier, we reviewed the proposal and selected based on their qualifications. So we are talking about a contract. We negotiated with Garver. The, like I say, the total amount that was earmarked or not earmarked, available for the services was one million dollars. We negotiated it to a not-to-exceed number of seven hundred and ninety thousand. We anticipate that it'll be less than that, but we wanted to make sure we gave ourselves the room to do the sorts of things we think are necessary for this critical Phase One. This is where we're going to actually get the bulk of the design definition done, where we're going to actually come up with the terms of the contract, where we're going to negotiate a guaranteed maximum price and bring that back to counsel for your approval to proceed with a Phase Two. So again, like I say, this is a very critical part of the project. We want to make sure that we have the right people and have the right budget to be able to do that work. So what we're looking at is this Phase One beginning in February two thousand and nineteen. That's what's undergoing right now with the idea that we're going to wrap this up around October, September, October, to go ahead and bring you a design build guaranteed maximum price and apply for the WIFIA and the SRF negotiations. So what we're asking counsel to approve today is the contract for the Phase One owner representative contract, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions at this point? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the counsel on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. I will tell you that Chris Bohm has a great reputation in this city, and Garver, as mentioned, also has a great track record and reputation, and so we are pleased to have someone that can bring a lot of experience and expertise to the project itself, and I think that they'll do a great job as our owner's rep. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Alan, I have two quick questions. First, we talked about, I believe, when we initially started on this process, aspirational goals for minority business participation. So my question is, will the owner's rep be the one kind of negotiating that in Phase Two? Because I saw they were looking at Phase Two.
They will assist the city in looking to see that there, that we reach those goals or that there was a good faith effort to reach those. But yes, they will be our helper in reaching those goals.
Okay. My second question is, being that this is such a huge project and we're looking at talent retention, is there a way that they can also look at working with our universities here and maybe even USD two-five-nine for learning experience for students who might want to get into water treatment or construction? This would be a great opportunity for them to learn at some point, not to slow the process down, but just keep an open mind around that.
I haven't heard that discussion on that, but bringing it to them, like the sorts of engagement we've had so far with the design builder, they're very open to those sorts of suggestions, so let us bring that to them and see if there's something they could do. Okay, thanks, Alan.
You're not requiring them to hire an intern, though?
No.
All right, okay.
Just wanted to make sure we can get our young people involved in something like that.
Sure, absolutely, if there's opportunities, but I don't want to put any extra burden on them in terms of forcing them to hire an intern. Chris Bohm's almost like an intern himself. Are there any other questions? Seeing no other questions, I would move that we approve the OSR Phase One contract with Garver and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Great to add you to the team. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
CON two thousand and nineteen dash two, conditional use to permit an eighty-foot-tall wireless communication facility on property located at the northwest corner of West Eighteenth Street and North Woodland Avenue.
Dale Miller, planning staff. As she indicated, this is a request for a wireless communication facility. It would propose, it's proposed to be eighty feet tall with a five-foot-tall lightning arrester on top of it. It is proposed for a compound that's in the electric blue there. I guess that's what color that is. Basically, it's forty-four point eight feet by thirty-five feet, compound in the northwest corner of the lot, at the northwest corner there of Eighteenth and Woodland. The compound would be surrounded by an eight-foot solid fence. And as you can see on the zoning map here, there is a concentration of limited commercial zoning shown in red here at that intersection. And then all the yellow property that's beyond that is TF three two-family. And then the white further on is the SFI, single-family zoning district. The applicant has stated that the proposed facility is needed to provide service inside structures, especially in increasing demand for data services. And I think in your packet, the applicant provided something like thirteen pages of support information. And there's some data showing the demand for their services. And the applicant has also indicated that they are already located on four other towers in the general area, including the tower that's probably most prominent at Twin Lakes. And the, I'll show a site plan here in a minute, but as you can see with this aerial, there is an existing building on the site. According to the appraisers' records, it was a vehicle repair shop. And so they would go to the rear of that existing building in the northwest corner of the lot and enclose that compound with a fence, and then the tower would be located inside there. To the west is a specialty upholstery shop. Apparently, people from all over the country bring in antique or vehicles that are special to them, and the upholstery shop does the upholstery for those vehicles. The property to the north is budding the application area. There is a commercial-looking building on the front, and then there's a residence on the back. Testimony provided at the planning commission is that both those structures are rented out as homes, even though the property is zoned limited commercial. And then to the east, straight across, is another vehicle repair shop. And then to the northeast would be the beginning of the homes that go further north on Woodland. Then southeast across that area, also zoned LC, has residences in it as well. Immediately to the south is an office complex that, according to the appraisers' office, it's a office that if you need nursing services, why, you can go there and they'll help you get those. And so that's kind of the general rundown of the uses. There was an eighty-one point seventeen percent protest that was, that has been submitted. So that will trigger a six-out-of-seven requirement to approve the request. DAB six, recommended denial ten to zero. And there's fairly extensive minutes that were attached to your packet from the district advisory board regarding the discussion that went on there. And then the planning commission recommended approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report, ten to one. Most of the concerns are, well, there were a number of concerns that were expressed by neighbors that protested that the tower is too close to a budding property. It's approximately thirty-four feet. The actual tower itself is thirty-four feet from the closest property line to the north, about eighty-four feet from the, let me go back here, about eighty-four feet from the TF three zoned lot that is just to the west of the upholstery shop. And it's about twenty-seven feet from the property line to the property line of the with the joint property line between the two properties, between the application area and the upholstery shop itself. And some of the other concerns were that because of the proximity, that the tower will depress real estate values and make it difficult to rent rental properties. The neighbor submitted eleven pages worth of material that you received in your packet. Some of it had to do with surveys and research done by various appraisers and realtors on the effect that a tower could have on property values and rental opportunities. Another concern was ice falling off of an eighty-foot-tall tower. Could be a hazard. And then there are two homes that front burns that are eligible to be designated for historic status. They are not currently designated. Don't know if the applicant or the owners actually have an interest in having them designated. But as part of the one oh six review, assuming that the tower is approved, the applicant will need to take that into account and present that information. The comprehensive plan, let me go. There's a close-up of the protest area showing who all protested and what portion of their property. The comprehensive plan shows this is appropriate for residential, even though, as you saw, there's a little concentration of limited commercial zoning. And the site plan, it's kind of hard to see there, but I did go through the distances that the tower would be from adjoining property, and I won't go through those again, but it is located in the back of the building that's there, trying to use that to screen the base of the tower as much as possible. There are utility poles that are along the south side of Eighteenth Street. And it is hard to see, but you can see the shadows of these utility poles on the south side as they angle across the street. According to Westar, I called somebody at Westar and they looked it up for me, those poles are fifty-six feet tall. So with that, I would try and answer questions.
Just a reminder to those that have joined us today that the public hearing actually took place at the MAPC meeting, and then an additional opportunity was held at the district advisory board meeting. So today's hearing is quasi-judicial and is not a public hearing, so we will hold the conversations. the conversations at the bench and will not go out for additional people to address the council on this issue. And so, at this point, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Claycombe.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank, thank you, Dale, and thank the applicant and the neighbors for being here today. So, City Council Policy Number Nine provides for referral of applications back to MAPC, and I think this process is appropriate for this particular case. So, based on multiple submissions of new evidence received in advance of today's meeting that weren't presented at MAPC, including that of expert witnesses, I move that the council return this application to MAPC for further consideration.
Second that, and just want to also recognize that we have an elected person in the room with us. We have Representative Carmichael that took time away from Topeka to be here. Good to have you. And we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Cast your vote.
Mayor, can I, I've got a question. Typically, when things are remanded back to the planning commission, it's up to the planning commission whether they will take additional testimony. Is part of your motion that they would take additional testimony or?
I think that was the guidance.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
We're happy to send Councilmember Claycombe there to provide further guidance.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Brandon Johnson to attend the NLC Real Academy, April tenth through twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, Washington, DC.
I would move that we approve that travel. I'm even willing to say round trip. We have a motion in a second. Cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, next item?
Councilmember Appointments, Comments.
Appointments? Additional comments? You guys are just happy today's meeting was short. Mr. Manager, do you have any additional comments?
If I could make a motion to adjourn, I would do it. Thank you.
Oh, my Lord. All right. I suppose I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move motion to second to adjourn. Any questions? Cast your vote.
Councilmember Clint Ennin, would you cast your vote?
He didn't want to adjourn. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
I did, I was just so excited.